It relied on flawed federal data about each tribe's population. So many tribes lost out on millions in aid. Some successfully sued the federal government for their fair share. This time around, Karen Snyder says she's relieved the allocation formula will use self-reported tribal population numbers.
This is the biggest injection of funding into Indian country that's probably going to ever happen in my lifetime.
If the disbursement is done correctly, she says the money will be transformative. In Albuquerque, I'm Savannah Marr for Marketplace.
And as they say, no guts, no glory. There's news, Amazon and Blue Origin founder Jeff Bezos will himself be aboard Blue Origin's first spaceflight carrying humans next month. In an Instagram post this morning, Bezos said he, his brother, and the winner of an ongoing auction will be among those riding aboard Blue Origin's new Shepard spacecraft on July the 20th. A hundred kilometers up is the goal, 62 miles, which meets everyone's definition of space. Bezos said in February, stepping down from Amazon and going to space has been a lifelong thing. Rival Elon Musk had sent a dummy in a Tesla. I'm David Brancaccio. This is the Marketplace Morning Report. From APM, American Public Media.
Support for our broadcast day comes from PR Sturgill Fine Jewellers, specialising in antique and estate jewellery, repairs and restorations since 1965. Offices in Radford and Withville and online at prsturgils.com. And from Flora Pettit Attorneys at Law, business and litigation attorneys providing practical and responsive advice to clients throughout Virginia. Charlottesville and Harrisonburg offices, fplegal.com.
Radio IQ is broadcasting and digital on WVTF Roanoke, WRIQ Charles City, Richmond, WURV Richmond, WVTU Charlottesville, WVTW Charlottesville, WVTR Marion, WISC FM Wise, WQIQ Spotsylvania, WIQR Lexington, WEHC Emory, WLUR Lexington, and in Richmond on 92.5 and Fredericksburg on 94.9. Radio IQ, a service of Virginia Tech.
Welcome to News Hour from the BBC World Service. I'm Razia Iqbal. In the Mexican midterm elections, President Obrador's party claimed
...
In the wrong place because not here, but there should be a spot for every council member.
That's right.
There was no spot down there this morning.
Okay.
So we need to call the, we need to call the tow trucks.
Well, we'll do what we need to do.
Okay. The Roanoke City Council informal session for June the 7th, 2021 is hereby called to order, and I'll ask our Clerk, Mrs. Susan McCord, to please call the row.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Here.
Vice Mayor Whiteboy?
Here.
Mr. Best pitch?
Here.
Mr. Cobb?
Here.
Mr. Jeffrey?
Here.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Here.
And Mayor Lee?
Here. And quote, Ms. President. This morning's meeting will be televised live and replayed on RV TV Channel 3 following the 2:00 PM session on Thursday, June 10th at 7:00 PM, and Saturday, June 12th at 4:00 PM, and video streamed through Facebook Live at facebook.com/roanokba. Council meetings are offered with closed captioning for the hearing impaired. All right, items for action today. A communication from the mayor requesting that council convene in the closed session to discuss vacancies on certain authorities, boards, commissions, and committees appointed by council pursuant to section 2.2-3711 Code of Virginia as amended. And a list of current vacancies is included with your package for this meeting. I need a motion.
Go move.
Second.
All right, thank you. Madam Clerk, please call the row.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Here.
Vice Mayor Whiteboy?
Aye.
Mr. Best pitch?
Aye.
Mr. Cobb?
Aye.
Mr. Jeffrey?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee?
Aye. Thank you. There's a communication from the Vice Mayor Patricia Whiteboy, Chair of the City Council Personnel Committee, requesting that council convene in the closed meeting to discuss a personnel matter being the annual performance value, performance of the council-appointed officers pursuant to section 2.2-3711 Code of Virginia as amended. I need a motion.
Go move.
Certainly.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, please call the row.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Whiteboy?
Aye.
Mr. Best pitch?
Aye.
Mr. Cobb?
Aye.
Mr. Jeffrey?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Mayor Lee?
Aye. Thank you. Are there any items listed on the 2:00 PM council document requiring further discussion or clarification, or any deletions or additions to the 2:00 PM agenda? Our hearing now will now go into our briefings, and I will call on the city manager to introduce the briefing. Let's go.
Good morning. Good morning, Mayor and Council. We are continuing our discussion regarding the FY21 budget, FY22 budget, as we progress toward adoption at your meeting on June 21st. And today, of course, is what we typically refer to as the budget study, which is really the opportunity that we have to follow up with you based upon both the public hearing that took place tied to the budget at your last meeting, and then also we've had the opportunity, I've had the opportunity to meet with each of you individually to discuss the budget proposal that was presented to you. And so today is to talk about that and talk about some changes that we are proposing to bring forward to the recommended budget that we provided to you. So the agenda for the presentation are really to talk about principally two items, which have to do with the cultural endowment as well as tree planting, one of which came up in the public hearing, tree planting, and the other which came up in our individual conversations, which was the cultural endowment. There'll be a few other kind of smaller things I'll talk about in that section as well, but those are the two principal items. And then we'll discuss the five-year operating plan. For those of you that have been on council, recall that one of the tools we use is to kind of look out five years based off of trends associated with expenditures and revenues, and kind of look ahead to see if we anticipate any sort of structural issues that require us to begin preparing for action sooner rather than later. And so for those of you that are new on the council, you'll be seeing that most likely for the first time as we go forward with that. That has helped us in the past in making adjustments prior to them becoming some type of budget emergency or budget crises. So we'll go over that, and then we'll talk about next steps in the process as well. As I've done in the previous presentations I will do here as well, which is to remind everyone in the community as well as among the council itself, that obviously the effort with the budget, though we talk pretty consistently for months about numbers, really starts with words and really starts with the community's vision for the future. The budget in the end is really a means to that end, to achieving that vision and aligning with the council's strategic priorities. So the vision statement that has been used for a few years is up, which of course is the city of Roanoke is a safe, caring, economically vibrant community in which to live, learn, grow, play, and prosper. And then the council reaffirmed most recently with a few minor adjustments, the seven priorities that are used to guide the budget development as well as the operations within the council, the, or within the government organization itself. And these are the priorities, same priorities that we've had for quite some time with, again, the explanation under each of those, and I'm certainly not going to go through those, though I will indicate that as we have always done, and as is the case currently, as we go through the budget discussion, when you look at the priority order in the budget, those are in financial order. So for example, the top strategic priority, or the first strategic priority that is mentioned in the budget is education, and it is the priority that receives the most funding, and then community safety follows, and so on. So again, this is just a reminder that those priorities are what drive the development of the budget as we go forward, and is the reason why back in last fall, you all convened for a retreat just for that purpose, to discuss these priorities as we start to shape the budget. Just as a bit of a reminder of what was proposed, the recommended budget is balanced, and it's balanced at $307,630,000, which is an increase of $9.6 million, roughly $9.565 million, or a 3.2% increase. And again, that is aligned with the priorities that have been established by the council. A few of the highlights that we mentioned when we presented the budget include in funding for strategic investments in all of the priority areas, and of course, you see those listed before. So there are increases in each of those areas of varying degrees for the upcoming budget year. Of course, we also spent quite a bit of time talking about strategic compensation increases predominantly in the area of public safety. Those are of course included, as well as the 3% across the board increase for FTEs within the organization. And then there are some strategic fee increases. Those were aligned with things such as trying to maintain the 50% subsidy rate associated with solid waste, and then looking ahead to capital projects in stormwater utilities, for example. So a couple of those items were of course included in what was presented to you all as well, and play a role in that $307 million of revenue in the budget. As I mentioned, the primary purpose of today is to actually follow up from the public hearing as well as from those one-on-one meetings with you all. Before I get into these items, let me identify a few. There's always seemingly some housekeeping that goes on with this as well after we submit the budget, and there are a few items that I just want to kind of mention. I'm not going to go through all of them, but there were a couple of errors that we noted in the budget. For example, we had incorrectly entered the sister city amount, for example, and that has been corrected in the budget to reflect what was the FY20 level, which we had incorrectly identified it, I think at the prior, at the prior level associated with it. We also had, last year, we had to reduce the youth athletics budget out of there. We pulled it out of the budget because we were unable to do youth athletics because of COVID, obviously, and because we were in the midst of beginning to kind of refresh that. Those dollars have been added back into the budget. Those were not noted in the previous budget. That's $110,000 that will be going toward that effort. And then there are a few other areas that we had identified, we anticipated tipping fees associated with solid waste to be significantly higher than it turns out that they actually needed to be. And so there's a couple of items that we had identified, kind of on the waiting list, if you will, that have been moved forward. Two of those I just mentioned, sister city youth athletics, but there were a couple of others that were associated with some radio maintenance and some other minor kinds of things. Those will all be noted when the final version comes forward to you all. They're not really significant in the large dollar aspect of the budget, but I did want to draw your attention to those. And again, those will be noted when the budget comes forward in its final adoption, or final version for adoption. The two items I do want to note, though, that came from, and I'm actually going to start with the second item versus the first item, so I'm going to start with the tree planting item. This came up during the public hearing. There were a number of speakers that spoke about the desire for the council to fund at a greater level, the amount of tree planting that is done within the community. I did not have the opportunity during that because it is the opportunity for the public to share with you all their thoughts, to share and to remind the council that we do allocate through the budget proposal, there's an allocation of $630,238 to urban forestry. That does include tree planting. It also includes obviously all of the personnel and equipment necessary to maintain the canopy that we have within the, within the city. We also have noted previously, and I will note again, that tree planting is not singularly done associated with urban forestry and with the Parks Department. We also do tree planting associated with street projects as well as with stormwater utility projects. We did, if you recall, back in FY20, we included an additional $30,000 specifically for the planting of trees in the approved budget. At the time, I think we had anticipated that would be a one-time expenditure. Instead, it was actually incorporated into the base budget. So that $30,000 that was put in FY20 continues to be in the budget and continues to purchase trees. The roughly, that equates to roughly about half of the trees that are removed. So that $30,000 buys about half as many trees to replace as were removed. We are, based off of the conversations, again, with you all in the public hearing, we are proposing that an additional $30,000 be added into the base budget. So from this point going forward, barring some kind of economic issues that require us to amend the budget, we will have $60,000 dedicated specifically for the purchase and planting of trees. That technically will allow us to essentially replace one for one. We remove a tree, a tree gets replaced as we go forward. Obviously, that will vary from year to year, but the $60,000 will go toward, toward that purpose. The source of revenue for that additional $30,000 is actually the item that I mentioned earlier, which was we had budgeted anticipating tipping fees associated with solid waste to be higher than they actually turned out to be. So we will simply take some of the money from that and add it into this item so that that $30,000 is covered. So that was one item that changed from the budget as a result of the public hearing. The other item deals with the cultural endowment. The amount allocated, just to kind of remind everyone, we've been, we have been a partner in this effort with the endowment for a number of years as we have gone forward, as has the, a number in the, in the private community. It's a public-private partnership where we provide as a city a certain amount into the endowment. They use that in part to try to leverage private investment in the area of cultural endowment or cultural assets as well. The ultimate goal is after a certain period of time, enough money has been created in this endowment that the proceeds, basically the interest, if you will, from that endowment then can start actually going out into the community to actually support arts and culture organizations as we go forward. To date, the city's contribution to that endowment has been slightly over $1 million, $1,075,000. And of course, in this budget proposal, we had proposed reinstating the annual $125,000 that's in the, typically in the base budget. Obviously, in this last year, it was one of the items that was reduced as we went through expenditure controls associated with COVID. So again, our proposal was $125,000. After speaking with council members individually between the budget presentation and today, it is our proposal that an additional $50,000 of one-time funding be added to the endowment so that the FY22 budget amount would be $175,000 going to the endowment. We would still have that base 125, so you would see that in FY23 appear, and then at that time, you could make a determination in the FY23 budget development if there is a desire to add additional funds to that. But this, this would be an additional $50,000. The source of that funding is out of our capital project contingency. Those are our dollars that we use to basically cash pay for capital projects, so we would reduce that amount by $50,000 and apply it to the cultural endowment. So those are the two significant changes that came about as a result of the public hearing as well as the conversation with each of you. I want to pause there to see if there are any questions before we transition into the five-year operating plan.
Thank you. Mr. Best pitch?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Cowell, for that presentation. Other council members may not be aware of how many conversations you and I have had during your tenure here about urban forestry and the need to do as much as we can in that area. So I really appreciate what you're showing us. It seems important to me as well for us to be able to clarify to the public the total investment that we're making. As you mentioned, it's not just urban forestry, it's the streets maintenance people who are not necessarily replacing trees. They're putting trees in place where there wasn't a tree before, maybe there was at some point in the past, but there's not a tree there currently, and they're adding a tree, and the same with stormwater. So after June 30, you know, at some point, I don't want to say it has to be the first meeting in July or something like that, but at some point, if we could get a complete accounting of the amount of dollars spent and the amount of trees purchased by each of those three activities for FY21, so that we could say, you know, don't just look at one number in the budget. Put all this together, and we're doing a lot more. In fact, if we, if we were able to replace half the trees in the FY20 budget, then those additional activities may have come close to replacing the other half. So I think we just need to make sure that we can get that information out.
Yeah, we can definitely do that because we've actually already calculated the total number of trees. I don't remember if that was in a recent update or not. The dollar amount will be something different. We have not calculated that at least yet.
Right.
But yes, we can definitely do that.
But, you know, I mean, maybe people should also be aware, at this point in the year, we're not even planting trees. We're not, we're not planning to plant trees on any large scale, at least until starting again in November, because that's the tree planting season. You plant trees this time of year, they're not likely to do well. So we probably have pretty much completed what we're going to do for FY21, even though we're not quite to the end of fiscal year. On the other issue, again, appreciate the efforts to bring that up somewhat, and I'm wondering if there, and this is not something that you need to answer today, but to take into consideration if there's a possibility for any of the year-end funding to also contribute to this. I don't know when we're going to get to that point that you mentioned where the cultural endowment will actually be providing grants, but obviously, the more we can contribute and try to keep pace with what they're raising elsewhere, or at least closer to that, then the sooner that day is going to come, which will have a very positive benefit to our budget in terms of the arts funding that we providing at this point. So I just throw that out there for consideration as you're looking at any, any year-end funds that after June 30 and how we're going to allocate those. Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
All right, thank you. So is anybody else, if any, question?
All right.
I just have one question. Mr. Cowell, on the urban forestry, that allocation, I agree with Mr. Best pitch. It would be nice to know the total that we've invested just on the tree planting itself.
Sure.
But in addition to that, is there any grants out there? Are we aware, any grants for tree planting or?
There's not a great deal. There's a little bit of funding that's associated with, for example, the Arbor Day, and actually, Mr. Best pitch is involved in a, in a small program that has included, was it Lowe's that participated in that bill? I can't recall. Was it Lowe's that participated with?
No, no, no. Home Depot.
Sorry, I don't want to get the wrong, the wrong.
Home Depot helped us a couple of years ago in Corrigan, actually made a contribution last year to help with this Veterans Day.
Yeah, and it was tied to Veterans Day. Arbor Day, the Arbor Day Foundation has some assistance, but they tend to be, that tends to be more oriented toward homeowners and being able to do that. There's not generally a tremendous amount of funding out there for, to support urban forestry. There, you know, with time, that may change. I think there's been a lot more acknowledgement of the role that the tree canopy plays in, particularly in sustainability issues, and you might start seeing more of that, and stormwater as well. And certainly, if we qualify for a grant with, say, for example, funding for a street project or funding for a stormwater project, and that includes trees, indirectly, there is some grant funding associated with that, but one specifically just to plant trees is not very, not very common.
And the only other thing I was going to say about the cultural endowment, I think it's great that we're going to make that $50,000 one-time funding, but does it have to come from the CIP projects?
Yeah, that's just the source that we have.
That you have.
It's basically, as Councilmember Best pitch mentioned, the, you know, a lot of, most of our year-end funding gets shifted into the capital contingency so that we can, in effect, pay cash for capital projects. And so that tends to be where we actually have that.
Because that's what's left?
Yeah.
Okay.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
I'm not going to repeat what was, excuse me, I'm not going to repeat what was said, but I'm glad about the cultural endowment because I know being into art and like to see a lot of art, and I know what they are doing with the grants once they get the money. I think the city paying toward that contribution, I think that's a good thing. My question, my comment is, and I just want to make sure I heard you right, because I'm a strong advocate for youth athletics. I'm glad that the money was restored. It was originally $80,000, and you said it's $110,000?
Correct.
Okay, that's what I wanted to make sure was the 300 was put, $300,000 was put in there. I mean, 30, 30,000 was put in there. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, it's okay, Mayor. What we'll do then is we'll shift here, and I'm going to turn this over to Paul, and we're going to talk about the five-year operating plan, and then we'll talk about, I'll come back and talk about next steps then as well. Thank you.
Good morning, Mayor Lee, Vice Mayor Whiteboy, and members of City Council. I'm pleased to provide you the first glimpse of our five-year operating plan for fiscal year '22 through fiscal year '26. This plan makes assumptions regarding revenue growth as well as expenditures. It is important to emphasize this is only an estimate based on what we know at this time. As the economy changes, inflationary pressures adjust, and opportunities, priorities change, these numbers will also change. If you were to compare this five-year plan to the one developed last year at the height of the pandemic, you would notice a much different set of assumptions. Before we look at the future years, let's first take a look at where we've been and where we are. Fiscal year '22 finished with a slight surplus due to budgetary reductions meant to head off the impacts of COVID-19. This surplus was returned to many capital projects from which it was initially pulled. Today, we are feverishly monitoring fiscal year '21 as it nears to a close during the final month of the fiscal year. At this time, our preliminary estimate is that we will finish the year with a $6 million surplus. The surplus may grow even further due to the movement of expenses to the CARES Act for public safety personnel costs. Use of these funds will be discussed at a future briefing after the numbers have become more solidified. The fiscal year '22 budget reflects the recommended budget, which is currently balanced. As we look towards the future years beyond fiscal year '22, our current assumptions include operating expenditure growth of predominantly 2%. We are estimating real estate tax growth to be 4% in fiscal year '23 through fiscal year '25, and then easing to 3% in fiscal year '26. Personal property tax growth of 4% in fiscal year '23, and then easing to 3% in fiscal year '24 through '26. Prepared food and beverage tax growth is anticipated to be 3% each year. Most other revenue items are anticipated to grow 4% in fiscal year '23 and 3% in '24 through '26. Estimated increases related to salaries include fully implementing the public safety step plan over two years, that's fiscal year '23 and '24, as well as a 3% raise for each of the future five planning periods. On slide eight, you'll find the same information presented in a table. Something I'd like to highlight is that although future projections show a deficit, we are legally required to adopt a balanced budget. This can always be done through revenue growth or expenditure reductions. This can always be done through revenue growth or expenditure reductions. Each future year is unique and yet also similar. We have always developed a budget around the seven priorities. We have always developed our revenue, assuming conservative, not aggressive, revenue projections. And yet, we must also recognize that the last year has been anything except predictable with the COVID-19 pandemic. In most cases, our analysts have had to utilize data from two years ago rather than last year to determine year-end and future projections. Another item that we can be certain of and expect is the anticipation of unavoidable expenditure growth. Typically driven by inflation or market-driven factors, every year presents new challenges. We try to do our best to plan for these future challenges. Examples include rising debt service obligations, future maintenance requirements, and other multi-year contract obligations. The next bullet certainly falls in this category as well, market-based compensation. Paying our employees what they deserve to be the best, to be paid, has always been our top priority each year. So we, why do we do a five-year operating plan? Future planning is a best practice in order to respond to identified potential variances. The work that goes on behind the scenes to create this plan is no small task. DMB staff, Department of Management Budget, have worked especially hard on the fiscal year '21 projections, and I'd like to thank them for their continuous hard work. I'd also like to thank our new revenue analyst, Brent Galian, who is here with us in the chambers today. And he joined us six months ago, and his work that he has done for us has been outstanding. His excel capabilities and analytical abilities, and able to understand a concept and run with it, has been outstanding. So thank you very much, Brent. At this time, I'll take any questions that you have regarding our five-year operating plan and turn it over to City Manager Cowell once we're through with those.
Vice Mayor, also.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have one question. I know that we are required to have a balanced budget, and looking at the graph here, just based on projected revenues, will council have an opportunity to weigh in on some of the adjustments that have to be made in order for us to balance that budget? Because sometimes we don't get involved until the very end. I was wondering if there's a way that we could be involved along the way or during the process, because you'd certainly have to get it balanced. And, and based on what you're saying here, is that we may have to cut some things.
Yeah, and part of, part of the reason we show this information, and those of you will recall from having been on council prior, how we've used this, is for, for that reason. So if, and I should say, what, what we're showing right now does not cause us at this point any kind of alarm. You certainly have seen much greater gap in the past between the projected expenses and revenues. But the advantage of the tool is if we did see that gap grow, as we did several years ago, it allows us and the council to start formulating a plan. That was actually some years ago what brought the solid waste fee into, into being, for example. Essentially, the council concluded that they could no longer fully subsidize the cost of solid waste, and went to the half, the 50% subsidy. And that happened way before we got into the budget development. So yes, that, if we saw that need to try to actually either grow revenues in, in some way associated with fees or something to that effect, or control expenditures, that would become part of, all the way at the beginning, part of your strategic planning discussion as we go forward, and then start to formulate that. So if those kinds of actions are necessary, there's definitely a lot of conversation with the council.
That we'll have, okay, yeah.
Don't, right now, don't anticipate that being a part of it.
Sure, it's going to be fine.
But, but you never, you know, that, that revenue, that gap that we're showing right now is, is still largely based on those relatively conservative projections of revenue. If revenue grows more aggressively, then obviously you'd see it get balanced in that fashion, so.
Well, it sounds like Brent has it all under control, our new revenue analyst, so I'm confident.
What I'll probably say is, he doesn't create revenue, he just reports it.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Bestpitch.
Well, I hope he's out there once in a while stimulating the economy and creating a little bit of our revenue anyway. I, I just, you know, we've, we've adopted this same approach for years and years and years and years, and I'm aware of it. We, we try to be very conservative and not overestimate our revenues, not underestimate our expenses as we prepare each year's budget. But in line with the last part of what Mr. Cowell just said, my feeling at this point is that 4% real estate tax growth is probably an extremely conservative projection, based on where the housing market is right now, and based on the fact that the Code of Virginia requires us to assess real estate values at 100% of fair market value. And I have been looking, and I may have more to say about this later on, but houses have been selling, properties have been selling for way more than 4% above where they're assessed currently. And to me, that indicates that a lot of other nearby properties to the ones that have changed hands are probably under assessed as well. So I'll, I'll leave it at that at this point, but I think that we really need to concentrate on making sure we're taking that all into consideration. I understand that the housing market goes up, the housing market goes down. And that's why we do the assessments every year. We don't do them some years when we think it might help, and other years we skip it. We do it every year. And as I said before, we're, our goal is to assess everything at 100% of fair market value in accordance with the code. So I just think that that's a little bit of, perhaps, I don't want to be overly optimistic, but I do think that we need to really focus on that at the rest of this year, doing the assessments before the new assessments are sent out on January 1.
And we actually don't disagree that, obviously, there's been a movement in the last couple of years on the real estate side. So actually, we've increased in those assumptions, that percentage growth. It may indeed need to increase further as we go out. Kind of the unknown right now, obviously, is not on the residential side as much as it is on the non-residential side. For example, while the residential market was growing substantially, the, the mall, which is our largest private taxpayer, was actually reduced in its value. Don't know if that's going to stay true on retail. Kind of wondering what's going to happen with the office market as well. But, you know, we, we certainly will anticipate, and kind of to the Vice Mayor's question earlier, obviously, if real estate revenue, tax revenue grows greater than what's in this assumption, then you'd see that gap close. That would be a way in which the revenue actually outperforms what we're including in the projections. So yes, that is definitely probably of all of these, that's probably the one assumption that we're watching the most closely, because it represents such a large amount of the tax revenues received by the city. All right, then I will, thank you, Paul. Just end, end the presentation here with sort of a reminder again of where we are and what the next steps are. So we are coming to an end with this, with this budget year, and that will occur on the 21st, where you will take under consideration the adoption of the, the budget. And then, of course, literally at the end of the fiscal year, I think there's one day left in it, then the, the budget will actually be published, if you will, online right after its adoption as we go forward. And then, of course, those of you that have been on here long enough know that that then allows us to start the process of auditing and accounting for this year's budget. There is never an end truly to the budget season, but this would at least end the development of the FY '22 budget and then go into effect July 1. So that is the, the remainder of the process as we lie ahead, and that is the conclusion of the presentation for, for this morning. Again, happy to answer any questions, if any remain.
Well, thank you, Mr. Cowell. Seems as though everybody's questions have been responding to. Thank you.
I just have a couple of follow-up questions, going back to what you shared earlier about the cultural endowment and tree planting. It's really more about how to engage the community in supporting these efforts. You know, we can do only so much through budget. There's a lot we can do through community investment. And I think one of the things I'm wondering about is how we can promote programs like the commemorative, the commemorative tree planting program, where citizens can add to the tree cover in the city. Now, that's their investment in the community in addition to what we're doing. I'd just like for us to find ways that we can communicate how citizens can become more active in helping us increase our tree cover. And with the cultural endowment, is there a way that we can, in the subsequent years, just go ahead and build in some one-time funding to get them back to the commitment level, or to kind of make up for the lost ground that we had? Which I realize from last year was only 75,000 more. But if there's a way we could do that to just keep that stable, that's part one. Part two is, can we find ways to work more directly with them? We're the lead donor for the cultural endowment, and I'm not, I'm not sure most people know that. They're working hard to get individual and corporate donors. But as the lead donor, I hope that they, the cultural endowment can work even closer with us to spread the word in the community and in the region about the value of this, because what we're able to do through this in the city is not just going to impact the city, it's going to impact the region and the state. And so if there are ways that we can intentionally do that as part of our strategic planning, I think that would be really beneficial.
And, and I, I guess I'll take the second part first and say that, you know, we're, not only are we the lead donor, all of our, the, the money that we provide to them is unrestricted, and that they can use it for operations as well as marketing and so on, whereas the majority of funding they receive is restricted, meaning it goes into the endowment. That, that's the only place that it goes. They have, in the last year, increased their outreach to the community. You might have heard, for example, there have been radio commercials, certainly, that I've heard, there are others out there. They've put together, I think, the first really kind of annual report for the endowment and distributed that widely as well. So I know they are taking steps in that direction, and certainly, you know, we'd be happy to support them in whatever they take in those directions in terms of helping kind of broadcast what, what the work of the endowment is or is intended to be. The first point I would, the first question I'd say, there, there is actually no, no agreed commitment from the city. There, the amount that we've provided each year varies from year to year. About three years ago, I had moved, it was all one time, so every year, there was a kind of a negotiation as to what the amount would be. About three years ago, I moved the 125,000 at that point into the base budget. So that way, again, barring COVID, that way, every year, there's a, an assumed amount of $125,000 going to, to that amount. It would need to be decided annually whether or not there would be either an increase in that base, or whether there would be upfront, an additional on the, an additional one-time added to that as we go forward. So, so there is, I know they have a target, they've expressed that target to you all, but there is no funding commitment from the city. What our commitment is, that we will continue to be partners in this, in this public-private partnership. But probably an item I would anticipate, when we do our budget retreat, in next year, we would bring that item up earlier, because we have to account for it in the planning for the budget if there's a desire to increase the, the amount. This year's objective was really just to reinstate the 125, because we had had to eliminate it last year. But if there's a desire to increase that, that'll be something we'll want to talk about at the, at the retreat.
Well, let me just follow up on, on Mr. Cowell's comment. I just want, for the record, to be said that this council is fully, has and fully supports funding for the cultural endowment. And I think Mr. Bestpitch's idea, possibly effort in, that there is some year-end money that we could look at, making a larger share to the cultural endowment. But it's, let me just say, this has always been a discussion with us over the years, but I know that this council fully supports whatever we can do to, to help that, that group, and they're doing a lot of good things, and, and they've hit on tough times, just as we have, and had to make some tough decisions on it. Mr. Bestpitch?
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I, I wanted to ask about one other thing, and unfortunately slipped my mind, but it's just in a broad sense, I know we have a lot of unanswered questions, but do we have any idea of how funding through the American Rescue Plan may affect all this budget? You know, as we've mentioned earlier, there may be some things from the CARES Act that we can get reimbursed for that have already happened, but, but do we, are, are we just waiting for them to give us more detail, or do we have some sense at least at a high level of what it might be?
We do at a very high level, in the sense that we know what's currently identified as eligible. So, you know, by way of remembrance, 64.5 million, right, is, is our allocation out of the American Rescue Act. A portion of that is intended to replace lost revenue. To be honest, I don't think there's going to be a lot of revenue we can account for that, as, as we reported. We're ending this year, because of the expenditure, expenditure controls we put in place, we're ending this year with a surplus. So a piece of it can be used for that. Obviously, you can continue to fund anything directly COVID-related. So obviously, if there was a need to continue to fund vaccine clinics, or outreach efforts, or testing, we can certainly do that. Also, and probably where I think most communities are going to focus the bulk of their attention, attention and interest, is in activities that actually support the resiliency of those that have been most impacted by COVID. So you'll see that kind of effort coming forward, and that's where you get into things like rental assistance, job training, access to food, access to healthcare, those types of things appear to be, not appear, they are eligible. The question for the Treasury is how eligible, you know, what's the, what are the boundaries? And that's, the Treasury is still working. The preliminary rules have been out for a comment for a couple of weeks. There's 150 pages of those, and I expect that they'll pretty radically change some of that to expand. And the last thing I'll say with the, with the Rescue Act is that actually, while we were in the meeting, I get an email from the Treasurer that our, our first allocation has, has arrived, so it is now in, in the bank. So half of the money, half that 64 and a half million dollars, has been received by, by the Treasury, and so is here in the community. As you all know, we, we're going through a process similar to what we do with the CARES Act, a deliberate process of engaging with the community, and that's actually starting next week with, well, it's already started, but it'll start into the next piece of it next week with the focus group meetings that we'll have. And eventually, in the next month or so, that will result in the formation of an advisory panel again as we go forward. So I would expect somewhere around probably September, we should have an idea of what we'll be using, what you all want to use those, those funds for as we go forward.
So, so on Slide eight, the, the revenue projection for 2021 is listed as $303.5 million. How does that compare to what we had in the budget as the revenue projection for FY '21?
The, I think it was 295 million? 298 is what, so 298 million was what we had projected? And that does not include, that does not account for those CARES Act funds that we put out into the community, because those are separate and apart from, from that piece of it. Most of that is a result of either, mostly increased sales tax that exceeded what we had anticipated receiving.
Right. Because as we were finalizing the budget last year, we knew that we were in the midst of COVID already, and so we reduced some of those revenue projections, but we actually did exceed them.
Correct, correct. Yeah, we actually decreased some of our expenditures and increased revenues pretty, pretty significantly, so.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And the advantage of that is too, it allows us to fully realize the full benefit of the Rescue Act. We're not relying on the Rescue Act to balance the budget, so, unlike a lot of other communities, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. All right, if we will receive and bow the briefing, and if there are no further business to come before the council, at this time, we'll go into recess for a closed meeting, and we will reconvene at 2:00 this afternoon. Thank you.